Notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, July 25, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The meeting is called to order. We will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects be placed on a later, regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Is there anyone from the public or committee liaisons that would like to speak at this time? Please step forward to the podium. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Whitley, and I live in Autumn Creek off Bay Area Boulevard in Friendswood. Okay. And I am here about the Whitcomb property on FM 528. Autumn Creek did flood and flooded badly, as well as the Whitcomb property. So I have two points that I want to make about this, about the new site plans that we see. I'm concerned that there's insufficient drainage. The land flooded on the Whitcomb property, so it needs every bit of green space to function well, to not flood in the future, and to flood things that are downstream from it. Why is the detention straddling the church's space and the commercial space in the new site plan? I'm very concerned that this detention optimizes the church and does not optimize the commercial development that will happen in the future, or even the Phase II development that the church will have in the future. So that makes me wonder, is there going to be a low-quality commercial development because of that? The original renderings of the Friendswood Town Center that were given a few years ago looked nothing like the big-box design church in this new site plan. So I feel like there's some sort of bait and switch going on with this design. Friendswood deserves better than that design and materials offered in this new site plan. We need an upgrade from the existing storage facility that's already there, the other big-box church across the street from the proposed site, the gas stations, and the very old strip centers that are on FM 528. So I just asked the committee to reject this new site plan and redirect it back to a look and design to what was originally offered, and to consider the past flooding that we had, and any future flooding that will happen in that area.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Okay, seen none. Next is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless the commissioner or citizen so requests, in which case the item would be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, July 11, 2019, regular meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor. Shows to be unanimous. Next on our agenda are the action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure R 2019-15, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item is consideration and possible action regarding a preliminary plat of Kessel Chateau, also known as 301 Clearview Avenue. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Aubrey, could you provide the staff summary, please?
Yes, sir. This is basically two residential tracts at the corner of Quaker and Clearview that are being platted to combine the two tracts for one single-family home. There was additional right-of-way that was needed for Quaker Drive that they're dedicating with this plat.
Great. So, okay, Brett?
I have no questions about this. I think I'm good with it.
Just for clarity, it's two tracts that are going to be combined to one, and the existing house is going to be torn down and rebuilt?
Uh, yes.
No, you're thinking of the other one.
Oh, go ahead.
This is two tracts being platted as two lots.
Oh, okay.
There's an existing house on the corner. Let me make sure I'm getting on the right spot. So it's one, yes and no. There's one on the corner, and then next door, it's one tract that they're making into two lots, but it's vacant. There's no houses being torn down or rebuilt.
Okay.
And they will be dedicating right-of-way to the city.
Okay, thanks.
I should have asked before we started discussion, is there an applicant present by chance that had anything to say about this particular matter? Rich?
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure on the picture we've got, I think, shows the two houses, 301 and the next one down, which is likely 303, but I don't know the number.
It goes the other way.
So...
I think it's going this way.
Yeah, there's a house here and a house here.
Oh, yes, okay, sorry. Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, so I wasn't sure if we were intended to just look at part of the plat that we were given, and the other part is not really relevant.
Which...
What are you looking at?
So...
The two lots that are here or there in question are these two?
Yeah, these two that are on Quaker Drive.
Right.
And then the next two down are also shown here, but I guess they're not, we don't have to worry about those at this point.
It's only the bold, solid line, and I was confusing it with the lot that we haven't processed down the street.
I did it earlier.
So it's the bold, solid line around the two, so it's subdividing one lot into two.
Yeah, the two that are on Quaker Drive.
Yes.
Okay, and the next one down, which is shown on here, that's not part of this?
That faces Clearview, and it's not part of it.
Okay, I understand. And so, like we talked about the other day, Aubrey, there are a series of lots that are between developed lots all the way down here. And I guess my question is, is there any adverse consequences to those lots by doing this? They're kind of then cut off from the rest of the world, if you would.
No, all of those lots are currently owned by adjacent property owners, whether it be on Clearview or in the other subdivision, so adjacent property owners own all of them. There was a 40-foot road easement at one point, but the city has no plans to, it would be a road to the creek, which we don't, they're buying out lots back there on the creek, so we don't want a road going back there. So it's, there's no plan, it's not on our major thoroughfare plan or anything to develop that road, so we're not blocking access from anybody.
Not that it affects my vote, but do you know what they're planning, what this allows them to do that they wouldn't otherwise be allowed to do?
So this is actually subdividing one lot into two.
Oh, I thought it was combining two lots.
I thought it was, too. When we had our agenda meeting the other day, I was confused.
Oh, okay.
So, sorry.
So they're making that second lot separate?
Yes, so it'll be two homes facing Quaker.
And then they could sell that and build another house on it if there's enough room and all that kind of stuff. And they would then have access to Quaker Drive. They'd be the only one in that whole series that would actually have access.
Yes.
Because they are on the end.
On Quaker, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So they still end up being bigger than half-acre lots, right? So they're still really big lots.
Yes, they're .5515, and yeah, they're both the same, so both have a little over half an acre.
Lisa, did you have anything else? Rich? Anybody else?
Is the summary written properly?
The project description just says to plat a single lot, it should be to subdivide a single lot into two lots.
Okay, because it reads combining two pre-existing lots.
So that'll need to be corrected.
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry for the confusion. Like I said, we have another project going on down the street that is combining two lots, so, and they have, like, they're out of, I don't know, it's confusing, but...
But we're approving the plat, and you think, and the plat's clear that this is one lot being subdivided into two?
Yes.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor. Shows to be unanimous. The next action item is consideration and possible action regarding a site plan for Paintball Zone to be located at 14100 Beamer Road. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's what I noticed. Aubrey, could you please provide the staff summary, please?
Yes, sir. So Paintball Zone is an existing business in town, and they've been operating off of Dixie Farm Road near the creek. The property that they are currently on has been bought out, and so they are having to move. Luckily, they found another site here in town, so we can keep their business. And this is out on Beamer Road. It's a property that's got pipelines, it's got flood zone issues, no utilities, so for an outdoor use like this, it's actually a very good use for the property. So the proposal is just to add like a small, you know, 1,500-square-foot building, just to have restrooms and a, you know, shaded area for the players. The dumpster, the parking lot, other than that, everything is outdoor, you know, courses for the paintball activities. The property is zoned industrial, so the only landscaping required is a 10-foot landscape buffer across the front of the property, and they are going to have septic and well on the property. So it's just pretty minimal.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Rich, any qu, oh, sorry, thank you, thanks. Is there an applicant, would you like to step forward and make any comments? You could tell us your name, please.
Yes, sir. My name's James Hensley, and I'm the owner of the facility on Dixie Farm. We've been in business for 18 years at this location. The current location, and we're wanting to move and stay in the city if y'all have us. It's, we cater basically to families, birthday parties, church groups, and business outings and corporate retreats.
Just for clarity, you're the property owner or the paintball?
I'm the paintball owner, yes.
Got it, okay.
Well, if you could stay just for a second, just in case anybody, I'd hate to have you sit down and then come right back. Rich?
Yeah, I really, I appreciate what Aubrey was saying. This is a difficult property to get use out of, and it's a nice, it's a good thought. I just wanted to double-check a couple of things. I know you're adjacent to the old Brio site.
Yes, sir.
Are there any implications associated with that? Are there any government restrictions or anything that, did, did we investigate that properly, I guess, to make sure that there is not?
Everything would be, I mean, any, I don't think there's any adjacent implications from the Brio. It's a contained site.
If we were on the site, that's one thing. If you're next to it, there are other issues, and there's no one going to be living there overnight, and so all of those kind of things go away, and so...
That's correct. And there would be nobody, no drinking of the local water, I mean, everything's going to be, it's going to be potable, so it's just for toilet use and all that, so...
I hadn't thought of that. Good, okay. Good to hear.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about all that.
Nice, okay.
Yes.
I noticed that there's not going to be a sidewalk, and there is no sidewalk all the way along Beamer, as you correctly say, and there's not many people walking along Beamer. Matter of fact, if there's two a year, I'd be surprised. Having said that, I kind of like sidewalks, and kind of like the idea of at least starting to develop those. From what I understand, the sidewalk fund is financially a wash to you. It costs the same whether you build a sidewalk or pay into the sidewalk fund. Remind me, Aubrey, the sidewalk fund, that becomes cash that comes temporarily or permanently to the city to be used only for sidewalk on that property?
Yes, sir.
The only problem that we run into with that property itself is, and I've got pictures if you even want to see, but...
No, I was just out there. You have that retention, the two retention ponds right there.
Yeah, but you also have the road, and then you have immediately from the road, you have a ditch. So they would literally have to jump the ditch in order to get to the sidewalk, so that's our only problem.
You'd either build it on the ditch side, on the roadside, or on the, and there's no room on the roadside, you say?
That's correct, yes, sir. It goes strictly from road to ditch. Right off the road is, that's where the ditch starts. So that would be the only problem with the sidewalk.
Yeah.
That we run into.
That's fair. And otherwise, we'd have a whole sidewalk along, on the inside of the ditch, all the way down.
Right. And the ditch does run parallel to Beamer Road all the way down, too, from Dixie Farm to 2301.
Yeah, so then the sidewalk would have to be consistent on the property side of the ditch all the way down.
Yes, sir. And you do have, you do have properties with businesses there as well, and I know there's one that's the newest one, and they literally have the road, the ditch, and then that's where they put their tree line in, and then they've got their parking lot right on the other side of the trees, so I wouldn't know how you'd do that. I would be, definitely would be, if y'all did need a sidewalk in the future, because I am doing a lease on the property, but I am doing a purchase option as well.
Oh.
So in the future, if you require a sidewalk or something, if y'all do something with the road, I would be happy to...
Actually, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Aubrey, the way it works is you have to pay into a fund, and so at that point, that money would then be used for the sidewalk, and if it's done properly, it's enough money to do the sidewalk, so, so it's basically economic wash to you, I believe, and I appreciate what you're saying. I'm hard to convince on this, but I think you've actually succeeded, so, thank you. Thanks, sir.
Lisa?
I live right by the Paintball Zone, just a little further down. It has always been well-run and well-maintained. I think they'll do a good job putting things together. I've seen it develop, because I've lived there about 18 years.
Yes, ma'am.
So I've seen it develop from your very first, what was it, a caboose or something that you...
We started off really small.
Fox car?
Yes, ma'am.
And so I'm really pleased with what you've done and what you do with the Paintball Zone. I'm looking forward to seeing it on Beamer.
I appreciate that.
Brett?
No comments. I'm supportive, great use of the land. Thanks, sir.
Eric?
I really don't have any questions. I would like to state for the record that I associate pain with the Paintball Zone, so...
We do have a low impact for younger kids.
Okay, well, I only had one question that hasn't been already addressed by you. Is there a, I didn't see it on the site plan, but is there a dumpster? I saw the building, but I did, I thought maybe you would require a dumpster there.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we will have a dumpster on, there is one on the site plan.
Oh, I missed it? Okay, I just missed it.
It's kind of misleading.
To the right of the driveway.
Okay, but it meets all of our dumpster screening requirements?
Yes, it is.
Perfect. Well, no, great use, sounds like a perfect use, and wish you every success.
I think we found a good home, yes, sir.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you, you're good. Thank you. Aubrey, I think we have to amend our motion to include staff comments?
Yes, and then the consideration of the sidewalk fund option.
Right, but is that, I thought that was one of the comments. It's not?
Yeah, it is. It's comment number two, so if you approve those, then...
Rich would be, you'd be so kind?
Yeah, I amend the motion to how Joe said.
To include staff?
To include staff comments. Thank you.
And second?
Oh, second, second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor. Shows to be unanimous. Our next action item is consideration and possible action regarding a site plan for Clear Creek Community Church to be located at 3801 FM 528. Is there a motion to approve? I think it's your side.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yes, sir. This is the, so a new church location for Clear Creek Community Church. It is based on the PUD that was approved back in 2015. That was included in the packet material. The property is subject to the community overlay district requirements as far as building materials and screening. They, there's no remaining staff comments. They meet all of our requirements. The building height is 43 feet, which is, it meets one of the exceptions in the zoning ordinance, that if, as long as the building is a minimum of 43 feet from any property line, it can exceed the 40 up to 50. So they are good on the building height. Their primary access is going to be from Towns Boulevard. They're going to basically match the entrance to the towns that's existing across 528 currently, so that intersection will match up, and that will be their primary access. I'm trying to think if there's anything else outstanding. They meet parking requirements. As far as that, the detention pond reserve, we did meet with the church, and we've, so the PUD allows for a 25% increase or decrease on any of those tracts based off of that conceptual plan that was included with the original PUD.
What did you say?
The PUD, the planned unit development, so it's in the ordinance that's written specifically for this property. So they have, they, it was a conceptual plan that divided that whole 135 acres into green space, the church tract, and then some commercial tracts. And those are identified in the PUD A through H. So any of those tracts can increase or decrease by 25%. And so by then, basically, there was, there's an existing low spot in the property right there where they're putting the detention pond, that it's a natural low spot, and so that's why they're putting the detention pond there. They are only accounting for the detention for the church, and it was within the allowed decrease of 25% of the adjacent tract. When they do sell the commercial piece, additional drainage will have to be provided. Whether they expand on that pond that's, you know, that the church is building, or they place detention ponds somewhere else, it'll be up to the future developer.
Okay. Thank you. Dick, any, oh, I'm sorry, keep doing it again. Is there an applicant that would like to make any comments at this point?
I'm Mark Carden. I'm the executive pastor at Clear Creek Community Church, and this is Barry Morris. Barry is with Visioneering, our architect, and we'd be happy to address any questions you have.
Great. Dick?
I have a couple of questions. Aubrey, is it, is it the city's responsibility to build Towns Road into that area?
No, it's going to be a private drive.
Oh, okay.
Private road, and it will be, and when they do sell the commercial property, it'll be access to that property as well.
I see. I noticed in the drawings, the plat, that the changeover from the AE to the ex-floodplain runs like smack through the middle of the building. Is that a concern for anybody?
Through the middle of the building? On the site plan?
I believe so.
Yeah, their building's in zone AE.
Yes, it's in both.
Oh, okay. So they just have to provide onsite mitigation for the AE flood zone, which Harris County requires onsite anyways. We don't have regional detention over there, and then they'll have to meet the elevation requirements for that flood zone.
Okay. And the last question was regarding parking. I looked at the math, and that all seemed straightforward, although it seems like a pretty low number of handicap parking spaces, but I forget the number, seven, was it? Seems like a low number.
That was an exception that they wrote into the PUD.
Ah-ha, okay. Then the other thing was, it seems as if, I don't have a dimension, I can't figure it out really from the drawings without a caliper or something, but it seems like it's kind of far from those spaces to the building. I was just wondering what the accommodations were planned to be. Thank you.
Can you respond to that?
Well, based on the existing parking layout, I mean, we got the handicap parking stalls as close as we could, and so part of the, part of the design of building, and something that we like to do is create these sort of large plazas in front of the building that can be used as like, sort of like a large front porch, a front gathering space, so that you don't basically just have asphalt right up against the building. We sort of like to create that zone that sort of blends indoors and outdoors. We kind of create these sort of outdoor rooms, and so, so with that in mind, we got the parking stalls as close as we could to that, to that sort of what we call the front porch.
Eric?
So I think what you're putting in is very attractive, so I think it looks great. I guess just picking up on the comments that were made when we started the meeting tonight, are we within the spirit of the PUD? Because none of us were here in 2014, so as far as we're concerned, we are meeting the spirit of the PUD?
I guess that's all subjective. They did, I mean, the building elevations are different than what was presented in the PUD. Those were conceptual drawings. They didn't really have anything, you know, concrete at that time. The bottom line was that they did need to meet the community overlay district requirements, which as far as screening and, you know, we've gone back and forth on that multiple times, and they are meeting the COD requirements.
So I may come back for that, but okay.
Okay.
Flood district is Harris County, and they require you to keep, handle it yourself? Is that what I'm understanding? It has to be onsite?
Onsite, you can. Yes.
And we're going to meet that? Because that's obviously a concern for everybody down there, right?
Yes, they actually had a, there was a, yeah, Danenbaum did a drainage study on the whole property to start planning the drainage. Like I said, that low spot right there where they're putting the pond, and then there's a outfall pipe, like basically going to the creek from there, and it's all been reviewed by Harris County Flood Control and city staff.
Brett?
Are you with a civil design firm or just an architect?
Just the architecture.
Okay, have you, so this had been, your civil engineer designed this detention pond this way, or is that just conceptual at this point?
The civil engineer did design it.
I got, you hit on a note, for me, I mean, technically, this is in compliance of the PUD, but it does not come close to meeting the spirit of the PUD. I've been intimately involved with this piece of property. I've been on CDC, I was there for 10 years, and we, this is, this piece, we've talked about ad nauseam for 10 years. This is the most prime commercial spot in Friendswood. Always has been, and I was very disheartened when the church bought it. And I think that in 2015, the mayor and council, they went out of their way, they made great concessions. I think they made too much concession, that 25% allowance, that's what's killing, killing the property. Having that detention pond going out into that partial F, the original conceptual partial F, that just destroys that piece. Why can't that detention pond go run down the property line? You just turned at 90.
Yeah. So, I'm an accountant, so I'm not an engineer, but what Danenbaum tells us, and Danenbaum did the study, and they said that they couldn't, they couldn't push that thing further over, and it's all because of elevations, and Aubrey, help me here. So, so they originally had it designed further over into parcel F, and we pushed it back into H and F. And as Aubrey said, there's a natural outflow, kind of a low spot, running out to the creek, and that's where they're draining that detention pond into.
We, yeah, we also looked at options in trying to get them to put it on the other side of the church, like on the 528 side. That wasn't feasible, and like I said, this was one of the items that staff requested, was that for them to push the detention pond over on their tract as much as possible in order to leave the developable, you know, commercial property.
I just think the city made great concessions in allowing y'all to do this. I mean, that's, Wickham track, that was the, I mean, that's the crown jewel commercial property in Friendswood, and the mayor and council, at that time, they went out of their way, and they gave y'all a great deal, and based on this conceptual drawing here, now with that detention pond going way into partial F, and as was alluded earlier, any commercial development, they're going to have to put detention, their own detention in, so that's going to gobble up almost all that partial F.
So that's going to gobble up almost all that partial F. That just really bothers me, but technically, you're in compliance, so it is what it is.
Rich?
Sorry. I, I, I share Commissioner Banfield's concern about the, and, and the nice lady who talked initially about the disappointment about where the, the retention pond is. Couple of quick questions. This says resubmit. Was this submitted once before, or do you, Aubrey, do you know? Or maybe you guys do. The cover page here says, "Commercial site, resubmit." Did I miss a earlier submittal?
It's the first time you've seen it. We've been working on it for months.
Okay, so it's really the first submittal, at least from my point of view.
Yes.
Maybe you guys have had internal resubmittals. Okay, fair enough. Yeah, so this detention pond as sized is just for the church that you're putting in now, and then anything in addition would be more.
But I guess just to clarify, so Ryan Thomas, who's kind of one of the main sort of project managers for the church, has said that the detention pond is sized for, I guess, this Reserve B where the church is, but also the Reserve A there at the corner of Towns and 528.
Okay. So really, everything to the west of Towns Road extension i- is, is covered by, by this?
Correct.
And, and this is, this retention pond is mostly on the east side of, of Towns Road, so it's kind of infringing on that. It is kind of right in the middle of that property. I, I see it as a barrier to development for that. I, I, I share Commissioner Banfield's disappointment. Couple of questions about power. Do you know whether you're going to get the power from? I mean, is there new power lines going in, or? Right now, this, I saw there's a power line that comes in from toward Bay Area Boulevard and comes along the back of the property and goes up to the middle and kind of ends. Is that your power supply, or, okay?
From what I understand, the power's coming down 528.
It's one little power line that goes right along it, one single cable, it looks like. Doesn't look to me like three-phase. Anyway, go ahead, yeah.
I think they have to drop a new pole and pull in power there, Center Point does.
Okay.
Will be on 528. There, there is, you know, there's two houses back there in the back of that property.
Oh, I didn't even know that. Okay. Behind all the trees, okay?
Yeah, they're, they're, and Harvey, about six foot of water, five foot of water, and there is power line running to that.
Okay.
But that's not operational.
I understand, but, but you're going to use that, that single cable that's going along? I took pictures, but then I couldn't download them, so I can't show them. But there's a single cable going along 528, then about Towns Road, it crosses 528 across the road. All right. And so I, I, I'm hearing you say that you're going to come down to grade, go underground to your site, because CSC wouldn't allow another above-ground line coming onboard.
So if Center Point ends up having to put another big pole, yeah, transmission line out on 528, then we don't have any control over that, but the, the private service from that pole to their property has to be underground.
Understood. What I thought I heard was that you were going to connect to the existing one on 528, but is that not, or are you not sure?
Sorry, I'm not sure.
That's fair. That's probably the right answer. Okay. And that's, okay. So, so far, and then maybe this is unfair too, but I'm going to ask it anyway, is there been any progress on the commercial property development? That's the thing that most people here in Friendswood are, are interested in. Can you, can you give us any enlightenment on anything going on there?
So we, we hired Reed and King. Reed King, real estate broker, shortly after we purchased the property in, in 2015, and they've been working for four years now, trying to generate interest on the retail side in that property with no luck. We do, we are talking to a real estate developer at, at this point. We'll see if that, see what happens with that.
When you say a real estate developer, like an apartment complex?
Oh, no, he does all kinds of stuff. Retail, he, he may do apartments at some place, and some.
But, but your, your intention, let me ask this clearly, your intention is not to put apartment complexes on there?
The PUD prohibits that.
Okay.
The PUD's not a.
The PUD is, is only commercial.
Mm-hmm.
The residential is.
Good. I, I, okay.
So he can fight with y'all if he wants to do it.
There, there was concern at the time that, looking back on some of the stuff, that, that was one of the things that would go in, and that was one of the concessions given to say, we, we will go with commercial here, not an apartment complex. And just to reiterate it, I personally will oppose that if that ever comes up. Okay, thank you.
So my, my primary concern, not so much about the, what goes in, because it looks like you have enough room before you hit the floodzone on that adjacent property. I, I don't know that you'd want to go much deeper into that anyway, but my concern i- is the woman that, that spoke up earlier. I, I'd really like to encourage you to work with the neighbors to get something that, that doesn't cause them to feel like they've had a bait and switch. So evidently, and, and I'm new to this one, so I don't have the history, evidently she did. She, she had the history on what was presented first in, in the concepts. So I, I'd really like to see that happen, that you work with the neighbors that are around there. It just will make things go a lot smoother for you and for us to, to not have that, that friction.
Are we talking about how the building looks, that the aesthetics are?
I think that was her concern, was how it looks.
If I can jump back in.
Sure.
I, I think what her concern was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Aubrey, there was a bunch of pictures put into the package, and I'm guessing those were the original ones, because there were a lot of things that aren't relative to what we're doing today. They were nice commercial houses and people with baby carriage and things like that. I, I'm thinking this is what was thought to be what the church would look like, and this is what it is intending to look like. Or, or maybe it's better on the color picture to get us side by side. So, sorry, I'm getting lost in all the paperwork here. So that, that is what it's going to look like. This is what it was suggested initially. So that's what her version of a bait and switch is. And, and she has a.
You're looking at the first, the first page of the drawing?
The first page, which I, I guess is a, a rendering kind of of what this probably will look like.
Yes, sir.
And, and this is what was thought, a couple of years ago. Obviously, things develop as time goes on, but if, if you would say that these two look different, then, then you'd, so.
So if I may speak, I guess just to kind of the, the overall design of this, so I think part of the, the genesis of this design concept, I guess, that we're reviewing now is looking at it as like just a, a take on like a, a modern, modern barn, sort of playing off the history of just agricultural culture around here, and just the idea that, you know, back in those times, you know, people would sort of use their barns as like community gathering spaces, see, might have weddings, or any other kind of like functions like that where the community sort of comes together. And so that's kind of how we view this project is sort of like the community barn. And so think of it less like a, like a cathedral, like an island of just this church, and more like a, a community meeting house. And so, and so if we think about it in the context of like future commercial development, it's like in the old days where the church used to be at the center of town. And so that's kind of the way we, we envision this, is that this is sort of the community meeting house, Clear Creek Community Church, sort of in the center of potential future commercial development. So it's, it's not sort of meant to be an island, it's supposed, it's meant to work with and sort of, you know, cohabitate with commercial. And again, function more like a meeting house than just sort of a standalone cathedral, if you will. And so it's just a modern take on a barn.
So it was the intention to look like a barn kind of thing, which some people don't think is particularly attractive, but, but I, I understand what you're, what you're saying.
That's fair.
Okay.
My, my comments are very, very similar. In looking, reading the, the resolution that was passed to develop this property this way, it did have requirements that the building designed to meet the design elements and construction materials of the conceptual buildings. And at least in my opinion, you didn't do that. It doesn't, it doesn't really, I, I hear what you were trying to do, but to me, it looked more like a dressed-up metal building. And I know that's not what you were trying to do, and, you know, it just, I'm, I'm not sure. I looked at the drawings the same as the, the rest of the commissioners have, and it, and it just didn't seem to get there. I, I know you're trying to do the best you can, and I know you, you want, you, you're driven to have a very nice building that you can be proud of, but it just, it, it, it doesn't seem to me to meet the, the drawings, and maybe the drawings were the wrong ones to put in the original, but that's what got approved. So I'm just echoing what I, what I've heard the other commissioners say, and I, I actually feel the same way. And then the detention bond really stood out to me as well when I looked at it. Is the, I mean, so I can help you, is it, is it just going to be just a pond? Is there, is it a fountain? Is it, what is your vision for, is it just a retention pond?
It's a detention pond. So right now, it's not, and correct me, but it's not designed to be a wet, de- retention pond. But with commercial development, we've talked to one commercial developer, we can make it a wet bottom retention pond, and you have a fountain, have a water feature, do whatever, which would run at the very back of that commercial strip up front. So that thing is, what we're told by the real estate people, is about five hundred feet deep off twenty-eight, or 528. That's really developable, buildable, and everything below that is not, from a, from a retail development standpoint, it's too expensive to build because of what they have to build up in the hundred-year floodplain. So that's why we, we ran it there, right at the back of that.
So your, your position is, is you, you put it where it's going to be harder for other, any developer to build back there?
Yes, currently. Again, I'm telling you what the real estate people tell us. So that's, that's what, and the other reason it's there is because of Danenbaum, the engineers, the experts in this, that's where they say the best place on this property is there.
It's the most practical place. That's what they mean. I mean, it's the best, it's the most practical place.
Well, they.
That detention pond in that location wipes out partial F, so you just take that off the conceptual plan, because it's right up the front of partial F. And you're, and you're correct, your, your real estate people are telling you you're right. You can't go any deeper for commercial on your parcels A, B, C, and D. About three hundred feet is, three to five hundred feet is the max. But that partial F could be some type of mixed-use, you know, garden home, town homes or something, but with that detention pond right up front, partial F's gone. Detention ponds are either supposed to be in the back of the property where you can't see them, or up on the front of the property, wet with fountains and amenity. They're not supposed to go rot smack dab in the middle of your, your development, you just don't do that. But, I mean, I'm going to support this because technically it's in compliance, so we kind of have to. So it, it, we can't force you to do it, but if there's any way you could have your engineers taking another hard look at that, they're telling you that's the, the best place because it's practical and probably the cheapest way to do it. That's what they're telling you. I don't see why they can't make that detention pond an L and wrap around the parking lot, or move it somewhere else, case, make it an amenity, make it wet. But we're going to have a hole in the ground right in the middle of a major development, and that wipes out partial F, so.
In, in addition, it, it prevents you from extending Towns Road maybe as far as you would want it to, in terms, it's kind of right in the middle of the road, as you, as you, you guys live with it, so you know. You know, I kind of figured that you'd have Towns Road go down through about where the retention pond is, and go across, and then feed both sides, and, and this all goes away when you do this, like, like Commissioner Banfield said.
If you can make it some type of amenity, I mean, and put a park around or something, but where that pond's located, it's, nothing would be built behind it ever, so.
Aubrey, I'd like to come back to you for a comment. You said that you worked with them on this location that's owned. Is it, is it staff's position that this is either an accept, is it an acceptable location, or is it in staff's opinion, this is the, the most optimal location?
I think I, I think Mark will tell you. I've voiced all your same concerns in the meetings that we've had with them. I, if it was a tape recorder, I've said all these same things, verbatim. And this is just kind of, I mean, this is as far as we could get. The detention pond originally was an L shape. They did back it off because they were going to try to provide some detention for the commercial property, but not knowing how that's going to be developed, it was just better to just do the detention for these properties that are developing now and let that future developer decide, you know, whether, how to expand that.
I'm more concerned, I mean, and I hear about the pond, and I am concerned about it, but I actually was more concerned about the, the design of the church, because at least as I read the, the PUD resolution, all the rest of the buildings kind of need to match, that all the buildings are going to look about the same. It's a kind of a look and feel for, for that whole PUD, and I just hate to take the very first one and have it not match what, at least the conceptual design, what everybody, when they looked at it and voted on it, they, they looked at those drawings and, okay, we could support this. Well, now you are kind of coming in with something, at least to me, to my eye, doesn't, doesn't match that. So I, I guess I'm going to ask the question, is it possible to take these comments, and it sounds like you've been hearing similar from staff throughout the process, is there a possibility to relook at this thing and come back with an alternative? Or at least explain to us today why this is the best that, that you can do.
Yeah, Aubrey, I'm not aware that you guys, I'm sorry, because I've not been in the meeting with them, Ryan Thomas is out of town. I'm not aware you guys raised issues with the design of the building or looking at the building.
I, we had, we've had discussions about the materials. I know at first, they wanted to do hardy and metal, and we told them no on the materials. I don't know that I've ever, haven't expressed concerns about the design. I, I mean, I did have concerns, because it, the PUD was written that it's supposed to be a, you know, a development that flows into the retail. I think approving this first building does set the tone for the rest of it, and we don't know what that's going to be yet, and so it's.
Can I ask specifically, are we talking about material choices or colors, color palette, or both?
Well, you had those requirements, and I'm sure, I'm assuming you met those, those color requirements, and it sounds like the construction materials, but I, I, there was another requirement in there that talked about the design elements. And for me, it just, the, the drawing, the pictures don't like, and again, and I, I understand they were conceptual many years, several years ago, but it, it didn't look this, feel the same way to me. I'm just telling you, to me, it looked like a dressed-up metal building, not a, not a barn, but maybe I just missed the design that you were trying to go for. So I, I guess I'm asking the question, is it, what happens to your timeline? What happens to your schedule? I know this is, this has already been a long process for you, understood, but you hear a lot of reservations up here, and it's hard, I think, for some of us to come, come around to saying this is the right thing to do.
So Joe, in fairness to them, can we, I don't personally have trouble with the building. I hadn't seen the rendering initially, but I don't have trouble with it.
Sure.
But can we tell them what, you know, you see that you think doesn't look right? Because I'm not sure what they're going to go back and do.
If I can phrase something, if you look at their original rendering, it was a, a kind of a sharp brick building with, you know, lots of glass and lots of, and, and they have changed it to the barn look, which is quite different. And, and, and so, you know, I, I think the simplest thing is to say, we want something closer to this than something like this. That would, that would be the, the feedback I would have given.
And there, and that's just one, one of the buildings. I mean, there's the other buildings that are all part of here, and what you submitted doesn't look like a, any of these. And I'm just concerned that this is, this is the package, conceptual as it was, this was the package that was approved. And, you know, to the extent that we can get as close to that as possible, I think that helps the, the project. I also had a concern about this pond in, basically in the middle, middle of the property. And so, anyway, that, what's, what's, what's the impact to you to go back and, and take one more look at this? And maybe you come back and have to say, this is the best we can do, but I don't, I don't know the impact to you, so I don't want to just arbitrarily make decisions.
So what's the impact to us? Because you would be the.
Well, I mean, program, I'm just trying to think, from the building massing, I mean, programmatically, we're dealing with some large volumes bases, such as the sanctuary, where I think no matter how we do it, we're going to be looking at a large structure. We've done the best we can as far as sort of breaking up that mass by creating these, these stone, stone veneer lean-tos up against the building, canopy's coming off with some wood accents. I mean, if it's a material situation, we're not talking about a major delay. If we're talking about trying to match a rendering from a couple of years ago, and that, that's a significant redesign.
But did you use that as your starting? But did you use that as your starting point of the conceptual design that was approved? Conceptual, I get that. Did you start with that and then ended up with this or?
I, I can't speak to that. I was not part of the original design team, so.
Those guys definitely, visionary and the architect definitely had the pod, and they, they knew that. And that, we didn't hide that from them. They had it.
Does city council get another crack at this, or is this it?
This is it.
This is it.
Materially, we tried to use as much stone as we could on those lean-tos. Y'all mentioned the metal. We are still proposing a metal panel veneer, but it's a stucco faced metal panel. So it's, it's physically a metal panel, but it has a spray-on stucco appearance. So it looks, touches, feels just like stucco, but it is a metal product. I have a sample if you'd like to feel it, if that's a big deal. But it will be look, touch, feel, stucco, stucco and stone. So materially, we feel like that's in the spirit of the original pod.
And I guess my concern with that material, we had discussions. My concern was that the way it's installed, it still looks like metal siding with the seams exposed. And in the drawing, I mean, it looks like metal. But it, with the stucco finish, I mean, we were okay with that.
Okay.
I'm not a designer, but I think what the commission is saying, I mean, I think to blend in with a retail development down the road, literally down the road, I just don't, I mean, I, I think I'm sensitive to the barn concept. But to, in order to make that a cohesive development, I just think maybe they're looking for a little bit more modern materi, like, modern materials.
And maybe what we're missing is that the PUD resolution had lots of drawings, lots of buildings to look at. And maybe we, maybe we're just not giving you the credit, or I'm not at least giving you the credit that's due to your design. If there were more drawings or renderings that have different views, that we could, maybe I'm just miss, maybe I'm not looking at it properly. I'm willing to give you that. I'm, I'm more of, at least, I'm, my position is, I'd like to see you go back and think about the pond location and come back to us and tell us at another meeting, exactly, this is the best we can do, here's why, here's more of our reasons, here's why it doesn't, addressing the concerns you've heard. So, and I can't dictate that, but I, I'm gonna make a motion to table this for another meeting, for our next meeting. Can I do that?
Yes. Can I add one more thing? I know when this PUD was considered and approved, there was a commercial developer that was driving the boat, and there was a multifamily developer that was on the team. And then the church was part of that application. So just to be fair, I think these elevations were done by the commercial developer at the time that presented this application. And they're no longer in the picture, and the multifamily's no longer in the picture. And so this is the only piece that's left. So.
That's fair, but it does set the tone for the rest of the development. I'm gonna at least propose, and I may, I may not get it. But I'd like to make a motion that we table this item to the next meeting and have you guys come back to us and talk to us. That's my motion.
I would, we have to answer, I was gonna ask him some more questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I was gonna, no, I was gonna see if that's even, that kill you or in your timeframe? I'm a developer and I know you hate getting things tabled. But this is such a prime piece of property in front of, gotta get it right. I'd love to have your civil engineer here explaining to me why he stuck that pond right up front. Ideally, it should go all on partial H, but I get it, if you can't, if engineering doesn't work, fine, put it on partial F. But why right at the front? Why can't you put it in the back? It costs a little bit more, gotta run a little longer pipe, but it just, you just wipe out partial F with that detention pond right up front. I don't see any reason why it can't go to the back of partial F.
Just to reiterate, it was an elevation issue, right? Yeah. The further you go back in the property, the lower it gets, and then it just, it doesn't have anything to outflow to. Because once you sort of dig the pond, the bottom of it is below where it would need to outfall to. So it would sort of, it wouldn't, it just wouldn't function like it's supposed to.
I don't know, but you got, you're good ways from the creek, you're outflowing to the creek, correct? Yes. So you got a long ways to outflow. I don't think the elevation dropped that much where you can't do that.
According to Danenbaum, it does. So what, what we did, Mr. Banfield, when the city staff raised the concern about where the detention was, we went back to Danenbaum and said, where, can you move this? And their request was move it all to H. And so they looked at that and said that we just can't. There's, there's nowhere to put it, where to work from an engineering standpoint.
Okay, I can, I can see that.
And then they, they looked at other places, and the best they came up with was to pull it, as far as they pulled it into H, which I, I kinda agree with. One of you said, I think it was Towns Road, we're kinda blocking that. I agree with that. But that was what we agreed to, was pull it more into H. And the, again, the real estate developer tells us they can make that a water amenity. A developer can.
Well, right now, this is a rectangle hole in the ground, right in the middle of the property. And I, I, I'm not a civil engineer, but I don't agree that it couldn't be pushed back further. You got a long ways for outfall all the way to the creek. It just costs more money. This is the most cheapest way to do it, I guarantee you.
But compared to the whole development of the project? You have to decide whether that's material or not.
Right.
If it gives you more value in that land behind there, if it actually unblocks that where you can use it, it, it should pay out. If it's feasible, no.
Yeah, if you put the pond in the back of the property, you're saving all that front.
Right.
But you put it in the front, then you lost all that acreage.
Right. So there's a cost there that's not direct.
Yeah, you're devaluing the property.
Those.
It was costing you money.
The dotted, the dotted lines on the site plan at the bottom of the detention pond is the existing pipe or, I think there's an existing pipe or outfall that's there. And so that is the key factor in that low spot right there, is that that's already existing. So that is kind of what they're, as far as I understand, that's kind of what they're developing around, is that, that dotted line right there.
Well, then maybe partial F should just be a detention facility, hold the whole parcel, which is not, that wouldn't be a bad thing, because you could allow more detention for the commercial tracks. But I would at least stress it up and make it look better.
Any, any other comments?
I'm okay with your idea of table on it. It doesn't bother me.
Give you an opportunity to bring your engineer in, as Brett mentioned, and maybe educate us just enough to help us understand it.
But you also want them to think about the building, at least some of the.
Or, or present to us different views, something that just from the, what came with the package, maybe there's some different views that we, oh, I get it now, that I'm not, I'm personally not getting. I'm asking that. You don't have to. It's not a requirement.
So does this building meet our window requirement? It seems like there is not.
There, it's not, their finestration doesn't require, or apply to this property. That's only downtown district.
Aubrey, we'll meet in two weeks, right?
Yes. Yes.
It's two weeks, kill y'all? I mean, is that a?
If you guys want that, then we'll comply with that.
I don't think it's too bad a request. The city went out of their way in 2015 and made great concessions, in my opinion. We're asking there's one more concession. I mean, just take a hard look at that, at that detention and then address Chairman's comments.
Then I will state it again. I'll make a motion that we table this item to our next meeting. A second.
Do I need to withdraw the motion first, or how does that work?
No, you just vote on the motion to table.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Table. Thank you for working that through with us on this. We just need some more information. Thank you very much.
Can I say one thing? Yeah, you got beat up on a lot of things, but I wanted to say, I really like the sidewalk. I like the trees. There's a lot of things in here I do like. I've been doing, I walk up and down this particular street a lot, and I'm always on the other side because I can't. Anyway, I, I like a lot of the things you're doing, so I take some, something positive out of this. I'm.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Jeff, is that working? Jeff?
Doesn't sound like it.
Testing. One, two.
Do you want to share mine?
I can, I can.
Can we share?
I can share. Thank you. Okay. Moving to the next item. The next action item is consideration in possible action regarding a site plan amendment for Garage Ultimate under construction at 4650 FM 2351. The request is to consider a four-foot landscape berm in use of proposed building as screening in lieu of a required eight-foot fence. Is there a motion to approve? I need, no.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Aubrey?
Okay. So this is Garage Ultimate. The, it's a development out on 2351. It's, their, 2351 has 10-acre tracks that are too deep. And this is a rear 10-acre tract. We approved the site plan for this back in March of 2017. And at that time, Black Hawk Boulevard extension was on our major thoroughfare plan. And so, and actually before that, when they plotted the property in 2016, they dedicated the right-of-way for half of Black Hawk Boulevard. Then in 2018, we revised the major thoroughfare map and took off that Black Hawk extension. And so the property owner applied to basically vacate the right-of-way that he had dedicated. And so he got the 40 feet times the width of his property back. That was after he'd already plotted and after the site plan was approved, so his site was kind of planned around that. So with the property adjacent to future right-of-way, there were no buffer or screening requirements. And when he got the right-of-way back, that changed the scenario. It put CSC property immediately adjacent to the industrial zoned property, which kicks in eight-foot fence requirement and a 10-foot landscape buffer with a tree every 25 feet. I think the, so the original site plan was in your back-up material, and the proposed amendments are in there as well. This development, I think, is a little bit of a unique industrial development. It's, everything is enclosed. It's not like it's a lay-down yard or big stacks or, you know, of materials or anything like that. Everything's enclosed. And I tried to explain in your back-up material, and there was, the owner provided pictures, that he's using the building as part of the fencing around the property. So the long buildings are gonna have fences attached to the ends of them, and it'll like basically enclose the whole property. So his proposal is to do a four-foot berm, so he'll still have some separation. And then it'll have the 10-foot landscape buffer inside of that. And then it's just gonna be the flat building that's 26 feet tall is the only thing you're gonna see from the adjacent property. So hopefully the pictures and the plans explain that well. I did, you know, Mary Kay and I discussed it. The commission does have the authority in considering adjacent uses of the property to consider alternate screening options. So I believe the applicant is here if you have any questions for him.
Great. If the applicant would like to come up, make any comments?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Nick Deutsch. I can answer any questions, but Ms. Arben explained it well. Essentially, we've got a 26-foot tall back of our building that the fence is all attached to. So that is the, depending on how you look at it, but the front enclosure of the building. We're actually making efforts to screen that with trees. And we've got the, the tree requirement every 25 feet. We're doing nice hardwoods, we're doing river birks, we're doing nutty oaks, and we're doing live oaks to, to make that look nice, at least in my opinion. An eight-foot fence behind that would serve no purpose, in front of that would actually detract from the aesthetics of the trees. So we're asking for relief from that requirement. Happy to answer any other questions.
Great. Brett?
I have no, I'm in support of this. I'd rather see landscape berms and trees and a fence that's gonna deteriorate pretty quickly. And it's also so far back from 2351, at some point, something would be built between that and the road, so I'm okay with this.
Rich?
Yeah, I also, I like what you're doing. I see you've already got two of the buildings kind of already built and blowing and going. So that's, that's encouraging. And you already have the berm, I guess the berm as it is is already, oh, sorry.
Berm as it is is already built.
It's shaped and it'll be, it'll be manicured and hydromolded and all that, but the berm is shaped.
It's basically there, but you're gonna kind of trim it a little bit. Okay, gotcha. And the trees, I didn't quite understand, are they gonna be on the berm, on the building side of the berm or on the roadside of, the former roadside of the berm?
They'll be on the, on the backside, so the building side of the berm.
So they'll be inside the berm?
They're kind of partially on the berm, but on, towards the, towards the building side of it.
Okay, okay. So they'll be partially screened. And what I didn't see, the only concern I had was how big are the trees going to start out at?
They're the three-inch caliber, but they're, to get that.
I didn't see the three-inch caliber. It's probably in here and I missed it.
No, that, no, that's fine. It's three-inch caliber, and I believe we're having to go 65 gallon.
Yeah, those would be good-sized trees.
Those are good-sized trees even from day one.
Yeah, so we won't have to wait a long time for those to grow.
Exactly.
No, I'm, I'm supportive of this too. I think it's a good solution.
I agree. I like it.
Anything else? I think he's asked, so the, the trees are gonna go partially on the berm? So, so as a screening, you're gonna have kind of a four-foot berm and then trees sort of growing from that, three, two, three, four feet up, upward, okay?
Yes.
Okay. I, I noticed when I went out to look at your property that the berm is kind of, it's not necessarily level all the way. There, you know, it comes, it comes up and down. Are you gonna, does that get dressed up anymore, or is that it? That's, that's your berm that's already there?
The, the not being level is actually intentional. In the middle, it slopes downwards so that it didn't look like a bale of hay laid out in front of the.
Okay, like a levee or something.
Right. It's supposed to, the, the idea, the inspiration was so that the whole property kind of rolls into the golf course right in front of Timber Creek. And, and we wanted it to have the aesthetics of more of a rolling hill. And we don't have a ton of space to make rolling hills out front, but we wanted to decorate it a little bit more than just a mound. So putting grass on it to dress it up, but as far as the shape, that's basically.
No, that was your intention, that was your intention?
Correct.
Okay, I, I understand.
I hope you like it.
No, I, I think, I think it's a great solution, it seems like to me. Okay. Aubrey, more, more for you. Are there any other barriers or barrier trees required on any of the other sides of the property?
They are having the, they're mitigating over 100 trees. So they are, I think they have a landscape buffer, you have a landscape buffer on the other side, and then other than that, it's just perimeter trees. But like I said, a lot of it's mitigation trees.
But it's, the other, one side is industrial, correct?
Yeah.
So that doesn't require.
Right.
Require.
I'm sorry, yeah. The property, the golf course property is industrial. And then the, the property to the, I guess, south is industrial. And then to the north is the road that goes to Timber Creek. And that, the property on the other side of that is industrial as well.
Okay, okay.
The CSC is on the first 300 feet of 2351.
Great. Any other, any other questions, comments for anybody? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Our next action item is consideration in possible action regarding a site plan amendment for the Walgreens located at 102 North Friendswood Drive. The request to. The request is to amend the elevations of the existing building to add a medical leased space to the Walgreens Pharmacy. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aubrey?
Yes, sir. So, I believe this is, this is the Walgreens at 2351 and 518. And this, applicants are here tonight to explain a little bit more, but I'm understanding that this is a new concept for Walgreens, to put like a medical clinic in their space. So, this is just to change the elevations of a portion of the building to add a leased space for the clinic that's being proposed. There is an item to consider approval of the perforated metal facade material for an accent tower that they're wanting to do. So, we, if y'all are okay with that, we do need to amend the motion to include that. But I believe the applicant has some more information for you.
Okay, great. So, is there someone that, applicant that would like to speak?
All of them.
Oh, great. Come on, come on.
Hanging up on us.
Yeah, come on.
I'm Leif Hansen with Wilkes Architects.
Could you, I'm so, I'm so sorry. Did, repeat your name again, please?
Leif Hansen.
Thank you.
With Wilkes Architects. I have Andrew Crook, leadership with Village Medical.
Along with me is Dr. Brent Asplin, who's our chief operating officer with Village Medical as well. And if you could speak to the podium. Thank you.
I'm Michelle Russo, I'm with Walgreens.
Any prepared comments, anything, any explanation? You'd love to let us know.
Well, so we have five clinics proposed in the Houston area. Some have already been through permitting. We realize you guys have restrictions on your facade materials. So, we have already presented some options and become compliant by going with stucco instead of an ichyha fiber cement panel. But we do feel that this metal tower element is integral to the overall look of the design. Do you guys have the rendering?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, I was able to get physical samples.
Oh, great.
For you guys, if you want to pass them down.
So, the perforation will be actually between these two and the sides. And so, the intention is to actually wash the light onto the building and create more of a glow effect. We don't envision light emanating from this thing. It's more going to be a glowing feature that's really tied into the branding presence that you're going to be seeing all around the area. So, we feel it's really required to just keep everything consistent as we roll out, because we are looking at a national rollout for this.
Interesting. Well, thank you very much for bringing these. It's always very helpful to us.
What material is it?
So, that's a brushed aluminum, perforated.
Could you elaborate a little bit? You said it's going to be used throughout the area? I'm not sure what you mean.
So, Village Medical, you might know our flagship presence, Village Family Practice, which is in the Houston area. We employ and network with over 100 providers throughout the city nationwide. We're with, in over nine markets. And what we do is support primary care providers. And as you all know, maybe in the last few years in the news, the next 10 years, we'll have about a deficit of about 50,000 primary care providers throughout the country. And what we're looking to do, along with our partners, is to invest in the community to bring as much primary care work into the neighborhood. That being said, if you look at the opportunity here in the Houston area, we're looking not only to have these first initial five in November and December, but then look at dozens of them throughout the Houston area and across the country over the next five to 10 years. So, there's an opportunity here to invest in the neighborhood, to bring a truly needed aspect to your area.
The only comment I would add, Brent Asplin, is that this is a new category of primary care. It's full-service primary care, co-located with a Walgreens with the separate entrance as you see. So, a quarter of the space will be dedicated to a full-service primary care clinic. So, it's a different category from a retail clinic that you may have obviously seen in these types of locations previously.
How about signage? I don't see any. Are you going to have something on there?
So, we're currently in the process of developing our signage. That's something that will be permitted separately through our signage vendors. So, VMD will actually have a Village Medical logo. We'll also have our standard Walgreens logo. We'll still keep our Walgreens Tower signage. You'll still see the regular Walgreens signage on the building, but we will have a new addition of the Village Medical logo on the building.
Will it be on the front of the addition or the modification? Where will it be?
It'll be on the Village Medical entrance. So, and what we're proposing actually will be code compliant as well.
So, I'm just curious, I'm a little confused. Where will it be? Can you show us?
Um, do we have the...
It'll be above the canopy.
Right. The canopy.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So, I think specifically for this building.
And will we see that again, Aubrey? Will we see the signage?
No.
No.
So, there's a, just the way they have to make it.
Yeah, they're, so they're allowed one and a half square feet of sign area per linear foot of frontage on their building, so that either, it's usually the side that the building is, actually, it's usually the side that the main entrance is on, but since that's on the corner, their entrance is on the corner, it'll be the side that it's addressed on. And so, it's one and a half square feet of sign area per that linear foot of frontage. And they can divide that square footage up, two, three, however many signs they need. And that's reviewed by our code officers.
I'll just continue. Brett?
Yeah, no comment. Rich?
So, yeah, just to...
We're sharing here, so yeah. So, just to go on with the signage thing, I see you taking off the Walgreens that currently faces 2351, and then we'll replace it with whatever logo you come up with for the... I'm good, I'm good, thank you. Oh, fair enough. The, and you're also taking one off that, the corner, that's right at the corner, I see from your drawing.
So, the, it'll still be there. It's not on the specific renderings.
Okay.
The corner signage will still be there. You'll still have a Walgreens strip sign on...
On 518 there?
Correct.
Okay.
However, it'll be balanced in sizing that'll complement the Village Medical signage as well, and will be code compliant for both.
So, you're going to change it to a different look?
It'll be a little bit smaller.
Yeah, okay. I follow you. Okay, that sounds great. So, this is not in the downtown district, right, Aubrey?
No.
Just across the street from it?
Yes.
And so, this is a CSC, and the only thing that we're violating in the codes or asking for an exemption from is the metal, metal building. And the metal part, is it to be painted, or is it just going to be bare like it's shown there?
It will be bare.
Okay, so it's, what you show us is what we're getting, except the holes are bigger than the small one, but smaller than the big one.
With the difference of these two.
Yeah, I got you. Okay. And the idea is that you want to have lights on it that make it a little shiny and make it stand out, and people say that?
Lights inside that...
Oh, inside going out?
Yeah, so it'll glow at night.
Yeah, okay.
So, it'll be an ambient glow, yeah.
Okay, fair enough. And this is going to be a primary care physician, so people will have, say, "Hey, I don't have a primary care physician. I can get mine here, and I'll talk to Joe, who always takes good care of me here at Walgreens or at this place here." And then you make appointments, and there'll be one doctor, I guess, assumed, oh, two?
Two providers on staff, most of the days, on the weekends. It'll be extended hours, 7:30 AM to 7:00 PM, and then on weekends, 9:30 AM to 5:00 PM. So, on the weekends, there'll be one provider on staff. During the week, Monday through Friday, there'll be an MDO staff on staff every single day of the week.
Got it.
Advanced practice provider as well, so your practitioner or physician assistant.
And so, this is all pre-scheduled stuff, not like emergency care of any sort.
Not urgent care, not, but we expect some walk-ins, just naturally, because just like you, if you want to come with me to Phoenix next week where it's 115 degrees?
No.
Love to have you do some public development with us.
Call me in January, yeah.
But you've hit it nail on the head. It's a great opportunity for the community to have a trusted pharmacist, recommend a trusted provider right there or then and there. We expect a fair amount of walk-in, and we will not touch the sidewalks.
He's come to too many of these meetings. Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. I'm good.
I actually love the metal tower. I think it's a really good look.
Thank you.
I think it looks great. I love the concept. I have no issues with anything presented.
Yeah, I have no further questions. Thank you very much. Aubrey, you mentioned that we need to redo our motion for, what is it exactly?
To include the approval of the perforated metal facade for the accent tower.
Exactly. So, addicted.
Yeah, I'd like to amend my motion to include the discussion we've had on the perforation in the metal tower.
Does that work?
Second?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Thank you very much. Our next item is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission, commission meeting dates. Aubrey?
Our next regular meeting is Thursday, August the 8th. We do have one zone change item that will be on that agenda, and not really sure what else, but, and then our second regular meeting for August will be the 22nd.
So, no public hearing?
Yes, we'll have one public hearing for one zone change.
Okay, okay, that's okay.
Could you run those dates by again? 18th and the 22nd?
August 8th.
8th.
Uh-huh, and the 22nd. I don't think you're going to be here on the 8th.
Next on our agenda are communications. Do any Commissioners have anything they wish to communicate at this time?
No, sir.
I did attend the Keep Friends With Beautiful, but other than be sure to go to the Labor Day Ice Cream Social, I don't think there was anything really hurting it to...
Free ice cream. Free Blue Bell ice cream.
Nice.